Let's call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order. If you would, please stand for the invocation, pledge of allegiance, and the National Anthem. Lord, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to come together. We ask your guidance, provide us wisdom in all that takes place here tonight. We thank you for our many blessings, and we ask your protection on those that serve locally and around the world, protect us and allow us to exercise these freedoms. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dancers that we're so proud. We hail at the fight that was last week, through our stripes and red stars through our perilous fight, oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming.
And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there.
Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
On the shore, dimly seen through the mist of the deep, where the foe's haughty host in dread silence reposes, what is that which the breeze or the towering steep?
As it thimply blows, how conceals half this closest, now catches the gleam of the morning's first beam, in full glory, reflected, now shines in the stream.
'Tis the star-spangled banner, a long may it wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
And where is that band who so violently swore that the havoc of war and the battles of legend could leave us a home and a country no more?
The blood has washed out. The first that's confused, and now refuge could save the hireling and slave from the terror of life and the gloom of the grave.
And the star-spangled banner, in triumph, doth wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
So thus be it ever, where free men shall stand, between their left home and the war's desolation, blessed with victory and peace may the heaven rescue them.
Praise be the power that hath made this reserve destination, then conquer we must, when our cause finishes just, and this is our model.
In God is our trust. And the star-spangled banner, in triumph shall wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
You may be seated. We would like to, at this time, take an opportunity to recognize the Ashley High School that performed the National Anthem, Principal Patrick McCarty, Instructor Robert Robin Clayton. And there should be a microphone, Robin, if you could pass it around. Have the student's name and the grade they're in, if you would, please. You can come on up here, we don't mind.
Weber Shai, Senior.
Caleb Bradley, Senior.
Joshua Blogg, Senior.
Cricket Moore, Senior.
Jake Malrae, Sophomore.
I'm Julia Coff, and I'm Senior.
Zoe Bryant, 10th grade.
Madeline Clark, Senior.
Thomas Winter, Senior.
Brittany McCoy, Senior.
Josh Byrne, Senior, or Junior.
Emily Stott, Senior.
Cadet First Sergeant Jose Villoto de León, Junior.
Cadet Captain Anne Coffey, Sophomore.
Cadet Captain Alex Moon, Junior.
Cadet First Sergeant Missy Sawyer, Junior.
Mett Star, retired, Jose De Noguén.
Robin Clayton, Theater Arts Teacher.
Thank you very much. I want to give one to thank Ashley High School and New Hanover High School for being part of our meeting tonight. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please?
Dawn S. Hayes.
Here.
Janette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janet A. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Tammy J. Cogan.
Here.
Lisa Dista.
Here.
Edrithie Higgins.
Here.
Bruce T. Shaw.
Here.
Next item is the approval of the agenda. Any changes or deletions? None at this time. Motion to approve the agenda?
Shall move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please. It says Item 3, Approval of the Minutes. There are no minutes listed. Okay. So we'll get right on to number four, Recognition of Achievement.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Our first recognition this evening is very special. This is the time we take to honor our School Board of Education and thank them for their outstanding service to our community. And in front of them, they have gifts from the staff, and the gifts are very special because they were created with artwork from our students from Castle Hain Elementary School. And so, in order to honor you this evening, we've invited our students from Castle Hain to come forward so we can thank them for their great work. So when I say your name, Castle Hain students, please come forward. Our first student artist is Lily Bauer. Is Lily here? Okay, Leila Carr. And their artwork is on the screen. She's just precious. And next, we have Leila Dickerson. No, okay. Next, Dominic Graham. Is Dominic here, Ms. Bliss? Okay. Alex Vasquez Ortiz. There's young Alex. Next, we have Joanna Wheeler. No, okay. And finally, Lee Wirthbacher.
Hi, Lee.
So if the student's art teacher, Ms. Peggy Cleary, is here, or the principal Cindy Bliss, would you please stand up? And the families of these great young people, would you mind standing? Oh, there she is. We'd like to thank you and your students for being such excellent artists and for representing our whole district as we give these gifts to thank our board. Thank you for your service, too. And next, we will recognize the theater departments from Hogard and Laney High Schools. Both groups have received high honors at the State Theater Conference High School Play Festival. Hogard Theater Teacher Ally Collins and her students, with their play Psycho Neurotic Fantasies, wow, brought home a superior rating and the Excellence in Puppetry Award. And Laney Theater Teacher Brent Holland and his students, with their play A Game, brought home a superior rating, excellence in makeup design, and excellence in acting. So now I will call up each school, one at a time. Ms. Collins, if you're here with your students, would you please come forward to be recognized? Okay. Mr. McCoy just informed me that there are only sixteen schools across the state that win this recognition, and New Hanover County Schools had two of the honorarys. So that is really awesome. Congratulations. And next, if we could have Mr. Holland and his students, please come forward so we can recognize you all.
Senior speeches tonight.
Oh, okay. And to Dr. Sullivan and Mr. Al O'Brien and the families of these students, congratulations. We appreciate your schools' hard work. Our next recognition this evening goes to four schools who have shown to be outstanding positive behavior intervention and support schools. We call that PBIS. Myrtle Grove Middle School earned the Green Ribbon as a new school to PBIS implementation, meeting all necessary requirements. Three of our schools earned the Exemplar Ribbon, having met all PBIS requirements for that level and showing behavior improvements over the past years. And those schools are Gregory, Pine Valley, and Riceboro Elementary Schools. So now I will call up the principal to be recognized for that great achievement. First, we'll have Mr. Sam Heisman from our great Myrtle Grove Middle School. Go Gators! Next, we recognize Mrs. Krista Holland from the great Gregory Elementary Dolphins. Is Mrs. Holland here? Yes, she is. And Ms. Bailey? Ms. Bailey? Next, we have Ms. Rebecca Higgins Upgrin from the great Pine Valley Elementary School. And our last school to be recognized is Riceboro Elementary School, and this is Bonnie Hall. Congratulations, Bonnie. We know how much hard work goes into helping those students improve their behavior, so we congratulate all those schools on that PBIS recognition. And our final recognition this evening, you probably have heard in the news media about our own Katie Snyder. Ms. Snyder is a World History teacher at Hogard High School, and she was recently named the 2016 Southeast Regional Teacher of the Year by North Carolina Department of Instruction. This past year, Katie was named as our district's Teacher of the Year, and then she was chosen out of other top teachers from thirteen counties in southeastern North Carolina to be named the Regional Teacher of the Year. And now she will go on to compete against nine other teachers for the honor of State Teacher of the Year in May of 2016. Ms. Snyder, if you're here, would you please come forward? We're all so proud of Ms. Snyder. And also, I just want to make one note. Now, we have the Regional Teacher of the Year, we have the Regional Principal of the Year with Robin Hamilton, and we have the Regional Superintendent of the Year with Dr. Markley. So I always say. I think we're on our way to becoming one of the greatest districts in the state. So congratulations. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Item 5. As I call to the audience relating to agenda items, we've had no one to sign up. Next, Item 6, Administrative Personnel. Item A, Administrative Recommendation, Dr. Markley.
We just have one this evening. And that recommendation is for a temporary position, and I would like to recommend Monica Goza to serve as the Immersion Transition Coordinator from January of this year up until possibly June 30, 2016. We are advertising for a principal, but I want to make sure that somebody who can oversee this program and coordinate it as it goes through. If that principal can start sooner, then this would be a shorter contract, and it would be a part-time position of approximately twenty hours per week. Ms. Goza, as you know, was recently retired as the principal at Winter Park Elementary.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Markley. Item 7, I think I'll just combine all three of the things, Ms. Higgins, since you're reporting on all of them. Item A is our Head Start Liaison Report. Item B is the Expenditure Report relating to Head Start. Then Item C is our semi-annual non-federal share report, if that's okay with you.
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Thank you.
I will just go over some of the highlights for the television audience. I believe everyone has a copy in their packet somewheres of these. If they need additional information, I'll be happy to provide anything they don't have. As of December of 2015, there were two hundred and sixty students enrolled at Johnson, which is the capacity. There is currently seventy-eight students on the waiting list, most of those are three-year-olds. There are currently twenty-two special needs students. You know, I don't know what we can do. We're supposed to have twenty-six, so I don't know exactly what the system would be expected to do. LaShawn, can you answer that?
We currently are meeting with families and assessing students within the program, and so this requirement is by the end of the school year.
Okay, all right. So, you know, we want to make sure we have the twenty-six so that we don't get dinged by the Head Start people. Call attention to a couple of things. Fiscal integrity and enrollment, recruitment, selection, eligibility, and attendance monitoring review has been completed by the Office of Head Start. No concerns were identified at this point. Another thing, a new transportation waiver was awarded from the Region 4 Office of Head Start, which is Atlanta. Registration kickoff, and for anybody who's interested in the Head Start program, registration kickoff for the 2016-17 school year starts January 25th, and flyers are being shared to selected elementary schools. New applicants will be available after, applications will be available after this event. There's a non-competing continuation grant for the school year 2016-2017 that needs to be submitted by February 1 to the Regional 4 Office. They have gone through professional development, and their next Policy Council meeting will be January 21 at 5:00 in the Spencer Building. And that's the Liaison Report. The Expenditure Report, budgeted $2,053,000. Year-to-date expenditure is $974,900, leaving a balance of $1,061,000 out of things like pre-K readiness, health support, parental involvement, pre-K remedial supplies, cellphone allowance, transportation services, and unbudgeted funds. From professional development, there's a budget of $26,800. To date, they have spent $12,300, leaving a balance of $9,585. As you can see, a lot of the professional development money was, has been spent already, plus $4,900 has been incurred. So clearly, you know, we're halfway through the year. We want to make sure that our faculty are prepared and ready for the students.
Your numbers don't match up with the numbers on the screen.
Yes.
They're slightly off.
Well, I didn't read all the...
No, I mean...
Well, $2,053,770, that's my eight, eight forty-six. No, I've got, mine's the most current. I don't know, okay. That's November. I'm sorry, that's November. I'm looking at Decembers. So I don't know.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize the difference.
No, that's all right. That's what you would have expected it to be, Decembers. Somebody put the wrong slide up for them.
We will make that correction.
That's a good review, so we know we're going in the right direction.
That's right. Lastly, is the in-kind. We are required to provide in-kind expenses as part of this process. Between May and October, we've spent $441,000. Year-to grant of non-federal share per the grant was $481,000. So we are well on our way of meeting the requirements. Probably the biggest one thing was the one-time asbestos abatement and carpet removal, $60,000 back in August. So if anybody wants to see it, and again, I don't know exactly what all, actually, is in the attachment, but I do have a fourteen-page breakdown of who got what for why. So I'll be happy to let anyone who needs to look at it, take a look at it. And that is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Any questions for Ms. Higgins?
I have a question under the Head Start in-kind expenditures, the line item, it says "Cia net loss for Johnson." Could you give a little more detail on that, please?
Let's see here.
I assume there's child nutrition.
Okay.
Okay, I was trying to find in this page of stuff specifically, but...
Right, okay, all right, thank you.
What was the response?
Chanting.
Oh, okay. This is for three hundred students who were supposed to pay and didn't pay?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Does this, does the school qualify under the community eligibility provision that we discussed previously?
Yes.
So this is in addition to what was needed, or what wasn't paid for? I'm not understanding exactly. It's my understanding that free and reduced lunch, under the community eligibility provision, would cover the cost of those services.
It should, Mary Haves.
Yeah, let me just clarify. It took me a minute to see where you were. The net loss for child nutrition is the amount that was not, this is a school-wide, they don't have to pay for the food, but this is the amount that the program lost for the month. Other months, you know, they may gain, you know, the actual cost versus actual revenue, which was an expense to child nutrition, which is now is allowed to be a match. So there was no cost charged to Head Start. These are the, I guess, matching expenditures for our system.
No, but that's my point, is that these are in-kind expenditures. In other words, this is money that is allocated from our operation budget, is that correct? Or the value of...
Just the child nutrition program, yeah.
Correct. That's not covered under the grant.
So you'd have to look at the whole year to know whether it's a gain or loss, but for this particular month, it was a loss, so we're allowed to take that as part of the in-kind expense.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Under Item 8, under Information, Item A, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, if Item C, Mary Haves a small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may remember, at the last meeting, I gave you an update that I normally give you with the comprehensive annual financial report, which, where we talked about fund balance and everything like that. Tonight, we're basically going to be covering the audit results, but I just wanted to mention that, you know, you all have a copy of the financial report for the public. I just wanted them to know that the entire report can be found on the finance page of our website. The easiest way to get the summary is there's a transmittal letter to the board in the introductory section that kind of covers the highlights from the report that the public may be interested in. And then, just to sort of summarize some of the major numbers, the governmental fund expenditures for the year totaled $239 million, of which seventy-four percent was instructional, nineteen percent support, remaining seven percent capital outlay and other. And our operating cost per pupil, which is a number that we get asked about a lot, was So just sort of wanted to present a summary to you. If you have any questions about anything in the financial report, I'll be happy to try to answer that. try to answer that. And at this time, wanted to introduce Michelle Thompson, our audit partner with Cherry Beckett, and she's going to present the audit results for you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to meet with you tonight. I want to present the audit results, as Mary Hazel indicated, for the 2015 financial statements. My presentation will be brief, and this is it in a nutshell right here. We have completed our audit for the financial statements for June 30th, 2015, and we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance that you can receive, which means we believe that your financial statements are fairly stated for the period ended June 30th, 2015. Often when people hear the word "unmodified," they think that's a bad thing, but that's the highest level of assurance. It means a clean opinion, so it's a good thing. So once again, the board received an unmodified opinion. Our audit was conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, which requires that we report on internal control over financial reporting, as well as the board's compliance with laws and regulations and grant agreements that have a material effect on the financial statements. During the fiscal year, there was one significant accounting standard change. Up here, it's indicated twice in the opinion column and in the required communications column, GASB 68. All governmental entities had to implement a new pension accounting standard during the current year, and the district was no different, and they had their portions. You can see that in your financial statements. This was required for all governmental entities. So we have to highlight that to your attention, so you know that there is a change in presentation. Three audit reports were issued due to government auditing standards, the federal grant standards, and the state grant standards. The three reports are all unmodified, clean opinions, highest level of assurance. There were no findings for this year as well. One additional communication that I would like to bring to your attention is a communication letter that was presented to you or should have been presented to you in the last couple of months. It's a required communication where the auditor communicates directly with the board. And in that communication, we indicate things like that we are independent. You expect that of your independent certified public accountant. It also highlights any significant changes. This highlights the GASB 68 change you see here on the slide. In addition, it also highlights the fact that the financial statements include estimates. Based on the nature of the data, there will be estimates in there, and it lists some of the types of estimates that would exist in the financials. In closing, I would like to thank Mary Hazel and Rhonda, who is not here tonight, but to thank the finance staff for their hard work. We can't get through this audit. It's usually an eight-month process. We can't get through it without their help, and as always, they are, well, eager may not be the right word, but they're always very helpful when the auditor arrives. So again, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight.
Yes, I do. I was curious about the GASB Government Accounting Standards Board 68, and you mentioned that had to do with pensions. The implementation of that is for next year?
It was in, it's in the current set of financial statements you have. The statements that you will see the presentation in is the government-wide statements. You will see a, it's a net pension asset, I believe. You will see a new asset labeled net pension asset, and there is a specific footnote that will give you also additional information. It was implemented in this set of financial statements.
My question is, does it have any impact on the availability of fund balance?
It does not. It's only in the full accrual financial statements. It does not impact the fund balance.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item B, Facility Needs Survey, appendix D, Mr. Higgins.
As you know, the New Hanover County Schools Facility Needs Survey takes a long look over a 10-year, 10-year span. North Carolina General Statute 115(c)(521) requires the Board of Education to have before it long-range facility plans to implement the facilities, the school facility needs as necessary, and it requires them to update this on a five-year basis. In 1995, the General Assembly established a commission to look at the comprehensive facility needs of the entire state and all of the school systems within the state. As a result of that, the document, the documentate, the documented facility needs across the state for the school systems resulted in a $1.8 billion statewide bond referendum, which was passed in 1996. As a result of that, we received a little over $20 million from that statewide bond Department of Public Instruction's School Support Division and their School Planning Section are the ones that oversee the facility needs and facilitate the facility needs survey throughout the state, and they tabulate the results of this and provide the information to the DPI and to the General Assembly. They provide us with a computer program for reporting and documenting the needs of the survey. The program consists of a list of schools, the ADM of each school, and DPI's projections for our school membership. Typically, they also provide the construction costs from across the state for us to use in calculating the cost of the facility needs, and they have, they calculate and have in, within the program, the building standards from the North Carolina Public School Facility Unlike the building programs that you're used to seeing from us for a bond issue, Facility Needs Survey does not include system-wide priorities and an implement, and does not provide an implementation plan. It does not include district-wide improvements, such as technology that you typically see in our bond programs, and it does not include program management or program contingencies, and it does not account for inflation in any of these, any of these costs. These are all critical items that before a bond program could be put in place or any of these needs put into a building program to be implemented, all of these considerations must be taken into effect and be included. Facility Needs Survey does include projected enrollment, conditions of the existing facilities, and the educational adequacy of our existing facilities.
Excuse me, the projected enrollment, do we give them that, or do they give us that?
No.
And how do our figures line up with their figures?
They give us that, and typically, historically, we usually exceed their figures, and you'll see, you'll see in just a minute.
That's what I thought, but do you know anything about this year?
We exceed, we exceed right now, today, what they project for us in 2020.
Okay, thank you.
So, and I'll, I'll show you those figures in just, in just a, just a minute. A separate facility program is created for each school and each new school as well that is included in the, in the survey. The Facility Needs Survey has certain assumptions and certain mandates within the, within the program. The 2014 bond projects that we have not completed yet are all considered to be completed. So when you see the capacity statement, you'll, the capacity calculations, it will, it assumes that Porter's Neck Elementary is completed, and it's up and running, and the capacity is there. It also assumes that the, that College Park is completed and that Blair has been replaced. It assumes that the renovations at Hanover and at Laney are complete and that...
This year?
Are complete, yes.
They, they assume that it's done this year?
Yes, we assume that all of those things are completed, because we're looking for future facility needs. Those facility needs are already funded.
Okay.
So they're included here. So this is looking at future facility needs that are not funded out in a 10-year timeframe. So it considers that all of those are already funded. It does not consider any mobile classrooms whatsoever.
Yeah, from the state, this is a 10-year projection.
Right.
So something that's going to be built within those 10 years is checked off as done.
Right.
I have a question. If we have discrepancies, like we already are larger than their, their suggestive figures in 2020, if that is the case, is there any ability for us to go back and have them revise their figures, or are we just stuck with their figures in perpetuity?
And for this particular survey, we have their projections, which they apply to it. They update theirs, project, they update every year based on our ADM. They receive our ADM each and every year, so they know what we have each and every year.
So even though they know what we have, they don't change their figures?
Well, they may change their, they may change their figures at the state level, but we don't re, we don't resubmit a new facility plan each year. We do that every five years.
Okay.
So they don't consider any mobile classrooms in their capacity calculations here, and you know, we have several of those around. Their capacity calculations are created for the elementary, the middle, and the high school levels, and the construction costs for new construction and addition and renovations are included in the computer program, and so it automatically calculates anticipated costs and, of course, the enrollment projections. The major differences between the 2010 survey and the 2015 survey are our capacity calculations, because the state, as you know, reduced the class size, and they went from 21 students in the K3 to 18 students in the K3, and that was a, and from 20 students at the high school level to 24 students per classroom at the high school level. Those were two significant changes in the capacity calculations, and it resulted at the elementary level in an additional loss of, or additional need for 828 seats, which is about elementary school and a half for us. Also, the construction cost increase are estimated to be at least 40%. And...
Is that normal?
Say again?
Is that normal? I know I'm in that business, but I didn't know it was 40%.
It's not normal. It's been depressed, it's been depressed for quite some time, so the costs across the state have been increasing significantly. But a 40%, a 40% increase in, in construction cost would result in about an extra from our 2010 estimate of $390 million. That would, that would probably bump it up to approximately an additional $156 million if we had an additional 40% added on. As an example, Snipes came in at $125 a square foot when we built Snipes. Porter's Neck Elementary came in at $157 when it was bid, per square foot. That's a 26% increase in construction costs right there. The state average is $196 per square foot, which is a 57% increase from what Snipes was at $125 a square foot. And the survey looks at and calculates it at about $194 per square foot. The survey looks at school capacity, projected enrollment, facility needs, and the overall construction costs. And here, slide down, here you can see they, we look at the ADM from last year and you compare it to a current capacity, and remember, this includes Porter's Neck and that capacity added in. So our capacity is there. You see that system-wide, we're, we would be under capacity by about 431 students, but at the elementary level, comparing it, we would be over capacity by 663 students. We would need that many more seats at the elementary level. When you look at the projected enrollment growth, you can see for 2020, 2021 school year, they're projecting 26,020 students. As of today, we're at 26,108 students as of today. So you can see those, those differences there. And looking at the, at the highlights of the, of the survey and what we, what we're looking at, look at the zero to five years, the new CTE High School is, is in there, and that's on the north campus, Cape Fear Community College. You'll notice that the school at River Lights, that's not new. We've known that's been coming, so that's, that's been in our plans for, for quite some time. It's just now coming to fruition with the development that's taking place, and we haven't even identified a specific site for that yet, but that is on there. So it's nothing, it's not something that's brand-new. Replacement of Pine Valley and Mirasay Williams, those are not brand-new. We've known about those for some time. And a renovation of Brogdon Hall and Memorial Building, and that renovation of Brogdon Hall is not to be confused with just simply air conditioning Brogdon Hall. That is renovation of the building itself, so, you know, and the Memorial Building. As you recall, back in 1997, bond referendum, we renovated the main building, and we redid a little bit to George West. This time, we're going back. We're doing much more to George West Building and the ROTC Building over there. So we still got to come back later and finish off Memorial Building and Brogdon Hall. Looking at the six, at the six to 10-year timeframe, we took away the new high school that was in there. It was in the plans in 2010, a new high school for the out years. But we took that away, and that was primarily because of our discussions and talk with the board in relationship to a new middle school on Sidbury Road Complex and then converting TRASC to a ninth-grade center for Laney, which gave us the capacity at the high school level that we would need without spending about $60 million for a brand-new, state-of-the-art high school. So it's much more economical to get the same capacity by doing it this way, and it's much more, a better way, much better way to use public dollars.
But I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Laney is currently 6, 700 over capacity.
Mm-hmm.
Even using TRASC, all that's going to do is shift that 600 or 700 over to, to TRASC and allow the main Laney building to revert back to the capacity it was originally designed for.
Mm-hmm.
That does not allow for the fact that overall, we're still 700, 800 students over capacity right now, if I'm not mistaken, at the high school level.
But aren't we increasing the capacity at Laney with the renovation and the media center and, and, and that, are we increasing the classroom?
You will increase...
There are a couple factors that'll factor into this.
It'll...
One, is some of the renovation will add capacity. The CTE High School draws 400 students from the high school mix. Also, you can do some redistricting at the lines. You've got one high school that's potentially going to drop down to three, so there is some line shifting you can do to balance some of that as well.
Well, but I mean, again, you get to the problem, though, with, with...
Long-term, in long-term, our, a lot of us have said our high school population actually flatlines.
Well, that's the projection, but I mean, how, you know, how right has the projection been? I mean, we got Laney, we got Ashley with almost 1,900 students. We've got Hoggard with 17, approaching 1,800 students. New Hanover with 1,650 or so students. And the thing is, that even if you pull 400 students out of that, is it wise not to be thinking about the possibility of even a small high school? I mean, if we're going to talk about 1A, 2A, 3A, you know, a, a 800-student high school in whatever part of the county, needs to be cert, apparently, I mean, you know, it's interesting, it's the south and the north. That, and it's, you know, where would you put, where could we put a, a high school? Do we, have we thought about where we might could put a high school that would siphon off from Ashley and at the same time siphon off from Laney?
You would have to put it in a place where currently it's all houses.
Well...
And I, I don't disagree that we, we, a fifth high school makes a lot of sense, but we passed the largest bond in history, $160 million. The next bond, a $60 million high school eats up almost potentially half of what a loan is.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily, that's the reason I thought about a smaller one. The only other thing that concerns me is, we have traditionally built our high schools for 1,600 students, because we have felt that that's a manageable size. Now, I know, looking at the charts, you've got, there's schools in Charlotte that have 27, 2800 students, but I have talked to people about Charlotte, and I mean, it's, number one, they're hard to manage. Number two, they're, they're going in shifts. I mean, it's, it's just a, and it's a real fiasco, and I, I don't know that, that that's in the best interest of our students to do that. Now, I don't mean we need to build another 1,600-student high school, but I think, you know, we might think about something small, and a lot of other counties have schools that are various and sundry sizes, and I, I just think it's something we might, you know, maybe, I don't know what an 800-student high school would cost, but I, I don't think...
Seven, seven years ago, we built a 1,000-student high school in my previous district, and that was $43 million seven years ago. Given the 40% increase in construction cost, I think 60 million is actually a conservative estimate, also, because you're going to have to purchase the land for that as well. I think, I'm thinking a new high school more likely runs 70 million, even one as small as 1,000 students.
I think we have renovations that we need to do before we talk about building.
Well, the beauty of the...
And we need to increase capacity at those, the...
The beauty of this five-year survey is that each five years, you get to review your priorities, and you get to take another look, a fresh look at what you need, and a fresh look at how you're growing, what your requirements are going to be, and you can easily put it back in, just like we took it out this time. It was in there in 2010. We took it out this time, 2019. Just like we took it out this time. It was in there in 2010. We took it out this time, 2020, you can put it back in.
This might, this might be a question for Dr. Markley, but what do you anticipate? We're looking at a ten-year timeline. The digital online learning is, is, is increasing significantly. Do you anticipate that having a, a significant impact on, on a physical overcrowding problem?
Now, because we are, I mean, we already utilize online learning at a higher percentage rate than any district in the state. And what that turns into a lot of times is a blended kind, where I may come in and do two physical courses and I may do two online courses. Now, if I don't have home access, a lot of those kids are doing those in those buildings, in their computer labs or in another setting within that building. So we're blending that a lot. We don't have a lot of students who physically never walk into their building. We have some. We have a student on, on a trip to, who did a mission trip to the middle, to Central America last year, who did all of his work online. Right now, that's the exception. That number might grow to a hundred to two hundred, which is of course helpful, but it's not that huge impact. I would say instead of maybe a, a new high school, we look at maybe, we look at, if, if it becomes an issue, like we're doing with Laney, a ninth grade center that could serve one of our high schools to help with their overcrowding. Because that's a classroom issue and doesn't require as much external building as, as a, as a full school would.
Well, and, and we increased the capacity at Mosley once we built the, the suspension center. So that would give us some, some space there.
That's a building, that's a, that's a program, Mosley, that could house up to probably two hundred students in that building.
Mr. Hance, I wanted to go back to the, excuse me, the River Lights. Is that a done deal as far as the property there for a school?
Yes, the property, they're committed.
Jason and Mary C. Williams?
Yeah, it's committed to providing us, for providing us with property for an elementary school. We're in active discussion with them now. That's, that's not an issue.
And they've been great partners with us, working with us on that.
Right. That's been, that's been the way ever since the land was first.
But I knew we talked about it, but I didn't know if it was really firm.
Yes, it is. I think you can count on it.
But you said they, they have not identified a particular area yet?
No, we're working, we're working with them, Mr. Anderson and Facility Plan Department's working with them to identify exactly where we've, we've looked at some, some sites. And we haven't identified the specific piece of property yet, but, but we will. We're all in agreement as pretty much as to the general area.
General area we've got sort of tied down.
Yeah.
We've sent them sort of a template of, of what the site needs to look like. And so we're working on trying to fit that template into that overall site plan.
And are we talking about twenty acres or?
No, we're talking about at least seventeen to twenty usable acres for us to put a school there. Right. We're not, they're not going to, they're not going to give us wetlands or anything like that. No, we're not going to take that.
Thank you.
We're not going to take that. These are the projects for, the various projects that you can see in the full plan. You can see plans for that at the zero to five year timeframe. And the next is the six to ten year timeframe. You can see the same detail for each, each project. And you can see that for zero to five years, it's a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars. For six to ten years, it's almost two hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. For a total of almost four hundred and seven million, just four hundred and six million and eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. That's what it all totals up to be for this year's facility needs survey.
I have a question about the, the land costs with New Hanover High. Are we looking to increase our space around New Hanover?
I'm sorry?
We've got an amount of three million dollars under land for New Hanover. Is that to increase the, the spreadage around there?
Right. Thought, thought was that you might be able to, to extend in that block somewhere. You might be able to, we've talked about that in the past. The board has entertained some offers in the past. I mean, we haven't made an offer, but we've had people come to us, realtors come to us, and ask us if we would like to consider a piece of property that's adjacent or contiguous to the New Hanover property. So that's something that was in there for a long range thing, looking at, at the possibilities that something might be able to be purchased.
And there's not a specific piece of land tied to that number.
Okay.
Yeah. And there was also long, longer discussions long ago about maybe a different athletic venue for them, which would have to be offsite somewhere. So. Looking at, looking at this in, in summary of the facility needs survey, it identifies, you know, all of our facility needs for the school system. It's updated every five years. The biggest change since 2010 was the capacity calculations from the state that reduced our class size at the elementary level and increased our class size at the, at the high school level. And the projected increase in construction cost and the actual increase that's occurring across the state, the actual state average. And you can see the increases that we have actually realized in our, our recent bids. The new projects that are in there are the new CTE High School, the new middle school, projected middle school on Sidbury Road site, and then conversion of TRAS to a ninth grade center. So the next steps, and you can go to our, to the website to see the full, the full survey for every single school and what is, what is anticipated for each school, what renovations would be done. And even those that are, don't appear in the ten-year plan that might be outside of that. The next step so far is to get certification and approval by the Board of Education, then by the county commissioners, and send it off to the state. And then of course, we continue to monitor enrollment and everything. We'll be bringing it back to you in February for approval. We encourage you to go to the website and look up any more detailed information that you might have for any specific project.
Well, also we're presenting it to the county commissioners on the nineteenth.
All right.
I have a question. The CTE High School is proposed to be built on Cape Fear Community College's campus, which means it's being built on Cape Fear Community College's property, which means we don't own it. I always thought in the past that was a problem.
Well, if it's a joint, if it's a joint venture with the county and the community college, then we can work it out so that we can do it. But building, for us, the school system, building on a piece of property that we don't own has been an issue in the past. But there is, I think, and Mr. Bullard can correct me if I'm wrong, there is precedent for the county owning a piece of property or another entity owning a piece of property and a school being placed on.
That's correct. If the county owns it, we could do it under an air local agreement.
Okay. I, I just, I knew in the past that had been a.
It, it had been in, in the past and before, there was a time when you couldn't do that at all. About fifteen years ago, you just couldn't do it at all.
New Hanover County would own the property?
Cape Fear Community College.
Well, that's one possibility. I'm not sure what the county's intent is.
We're still got a little ways to get, to get to that point and, and details on that one.
Isaac Bear is on UNCW's property and Wex is on Cape Fear's property. So this would be a similar situation as, as to those two schools. So I'm certain we could work something out, particularly if it's a benefit for students in the county. It's a win-win. Something like that would be a win-win for everyone concerned, Cape Fear and the school system and the county.
I don't, I don't deny that. I'm just, I'm kind of asking.
Right.
There are some hurdles, but they're not hurdles that can't be over.
I'm actually trying to figure out a way that we can get the county or the community college to build the building for us.
Maybe you need to talk to Mr. Trump. He might be able to do that.
Any other questions, Mr. Hance?
Yes, I do. Mr. Hance, just as a takeaway. We've got four hundred and seven million dollars worth of needs outside of what we're doing with the current bond issue, right?
That's correct.
And so then this is turned, this is really a tool that, that is good for the school system, but it's also a planning tool for the state, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So when the county commissioners are asked to endorse the list, they're not committing dollars. They're just committing to the plan or acknowledging the plan for purposes of sending it to the state.
That is correct. They're certifying that, that these needs are, do in fact exist in New Hanover County for the school system, just like the board is certifying, and it goes to the state. No dollars are committed, no obligations by the board or by the state to fund any of this. It's just an acknowledgement of needs and it does go to the state and the state does use it for a planning tool. And hopefully, there has been talk that it could result in a statewide bond referendum this time around as, just as it did in nineteen ninety-six. So they use it definitely for that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hance. Item nine, superintendent's report, item A, twenty sixteen seventeen budget process, appendix E, Dr. Markley.
All right, folks, we are getting to that point again where it's time to start working on our budget. Even though it's a short session, there are always some issues that, that come up with this. I'm going to ask Mary Hazel to sort of walk us through this. I will tell you that we will, Thursday we'll meet with our principals at their, at their monthly meeting and we'll have them start talking about some of their priorities that'll be part of this process.
Correct. And then we hope to have this as a discussion item at your January work session to bring back the schools' priorities in terms of budget as well as other legislative, like policy-type priorities. And then ask the board to go through the same process. And then ultimately, you know, we'll share those with, with other decision makers in the state as we go forward and prepare our budget for the year.
I just want, I do want to confirm that we'll be doing this as a, sort of a committee of the whole to our work session process?
We don't set a date for the work session.
No, we did not.
It's tentatively the.
Second.
Second Tuesday.
Would it be the second or third?
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday.
So it's a third Tuesday?
Yeah, the nineteenth. Yep. With that focus being on budget.
Nineteenth, which is on Tuesday. And you mentioned, Dr. Markley, that was the date we will be submitting the plans to the county commissioners?
The, the facility plan.
The facility plan.
That'll be a morning meeting and this will be your, an afternoon meeting.
So this will be at four thirty?
That's our typical work session time, so unless you guys want to start with it.
We were also planning to bring the Head Start, the year three grant proposal that night as well, because that's due the first week of February.
Yep. So it'd be two, two budget related items.
Is that going to be in the evening? Because we, we did have an invitation to Holly Shelter's eighth grade guitar performance on that same date. That's at seven o'clock, right? Just FYI, because I did, I did respond that I would attend that, so.
I can't promise we'll have you out of here by seven, but I don't anticipate it taking three hours.
It's in there. It's all fine.
We could start at four instead of four thirty if you wanted to start a half hour early.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I just, I just wanted to point that out. I didn't know if anyone else had.
What's that night?
Intended.
The nineteenth.
All right, so we'll start our work session a half hour early that night.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. No.
Okay, next item on the agenda, item ten. Item A, personnel, appendix F, Dr. Wellmers.
I would just, no, I think Dr. Wellmers sent an update to the personnel agenda earlier today. That included resignation, a couple of resignations and some other actions. Did everyone see that? Okay.
Just for one, just for clarification, the guitar performance is on the fourteenth.
It's showing up on my calendar on the nineteenth.
That's, oh, that's what the, that's what the email says.
But I think the invitation said the nineteenth, the one that was like, check yes.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at the email that we got.
We'll, we'll confirm that.
Today, at ten thirty. It is? Oh, this, okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, so it is the nineteenth. Okay.
Were there any questions on item A, personnel?
No.
So you're approving both what was there and the addendum that John sent us, the update John sent today.
I didn't know you didn't. I have some questions for Dr. Wellmers. Dr. Wellmers, on the, just to clarify the titles, the, um, let's see, where were they? Supplemental service resource managers. You hired eight. What are they for?
They work in the after-school program to, to run the, the tutors and the, the, the Shawn, you might.
Yes, those are the folks that we've hired to coordinate our after-school programs. And because the funding is considered supplemental services, that's the reason for the title.
Okay, and then what's the difference? You hired a, an after-school group coordinator. What is the difference between that and the resource manager?
I think, Madam Vice Chair, that is in our schools that have the enterprise funds, that have the, their own after-school programs. What Dr. Smith's program is, is in Title I schools that provide the supplemental services, am I correct, ladies? So that's the difference. The, this is, this is the enterprise fund in our schools that have their own after-school program. That's, that's the after-school group coordinator.
The group coordinator and the group leader that you've hired, they're through the after-school program?
Yes, ma'am.
And yours is Title I coordinators?
Yes, ma'am, for the tutor.
And this is the after-school that we provide transportation for, for those students?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And as I recall, Ms. Jackson told us it was really hard to get some of those students to stay after school. Or is that still a challenge?
Well, what I'll share is that we've taken a look at the programs that we made available last year in the elementary school as well as the middle school. And so we're actually operating off a, a different model for the middle school. And it was much, much more challenging with middle school students because a lot of those students are involved in athletics and have a lot of competing activities. So we have given greater flexibility to the middle school to make sure that those students are more engaged. Attendance was less of an issue at the elementary school.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you.
And Dr. Smith?
Any other questions? Was there a motion to? A motion to approve?
Need for approval.
Second.
Hold up the favor, please, the eye.
Eye.
Approved. It's approved. Item B, budget amendments, appendix G, Mary Hazel, small.
I'm going to ask that we move this to a different spot on the agenda. One of the budget amendments relates to an item we're going to discuss, particularly Brogdon Hall. So I would ask that we just simply move this item until after we complete new business. I'm sorry, I should have done that as part of the agenda review, but I just realized it.
I move that we move the item as requested.
Secretary Chakot?
Second.
Hold up the favor, please, the eye.
Eye.
It is moved. Before we get to the old business, I've been asked if we take a five-minute break, so we'll take a break this time. All right. A real five-minute break.